Good afternoon. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners Board Work Session. It's Wednesday, September 22nd, 2021. It is 1:33 PM. My name is Ty Mancer, Chair of the Board. To my left is Vice Chair, Commissioner Gary Edwards. To my right is Commissioner Karina Mejia. And to Commissioner Edwards' left is County Manager Ramiro Chavez. We have key members of our Community Planning and Economic Development Department on screen, as well as Assistant County Manager Robyn Campbell. We're here for an hour and a half, allegedly. We'll see about that. For the Habitat Conservation Plan update, Chris Chapeau's got my favorite background up there of the prairie, which is cool. And we have public access through our county YouTube channel. I think that's all the preliminaries. Go to the county manager.
Yeah, Commissioners, thank you. Josh and his staff are going to walk you through, first of all, provide an update. And I believe Brad Thompson provided an update this morning. If you can provide that. If not, I can also do that. Because I did have a phone call from Brad Thompson this morning. It also is going to be, staff is going to walk you through some of the key next steps as to how we're going to be taking in preparation to taking the incidental take permit. That is what I call is the golden coin at this point. And hopefully, we can be positioning ourselves such that when we get this incidental take permit, we can start implementing the requirements of the HCP that will benefit the citizens. So, Josh?
Thank you, Ramiro. I would be interested to hear about the phone call with Brad Thompson. Can you hear me?
Yep. Right now, okay.
Would you like to share the information? I'm not aware of the cut.
Oh, you haven't. Oh, I'm sorry. So this morning, Brad Thompson called me. And actually, we got a chance to connect. And he stated the publication notice of availability is going to be posted this Friday on the federal registry. And that is a big first step where the 45-day coming period will start. So I believe that is a good, great milestone that I think we need to celebrate. And I'd just like to thank US Fish and Wildlife and Brad Thompson to be great partners to continue this process.
That's great.
That is what I got from Brad Thompson this morning.
Great. So that had been signaled to us on a couple of occasions. But to have that confirmation from US Fish to the county manager is excellent. That's fantastic. Thank you for sharing. So as we dive into this, Joshua Cummings, Community Planning and Economic Development Director, I'll just kick it off real quick as a continued thank you to the Commissioners. This has been a long road. And when last we checked in, we wanted to just give you a quick, high-level overview of the many tributaries, as I call them, that are flowing to that big golden coin, as County Manager Chavez calls it, with the ITP, the incidental take permit. And recognizing that all of these different pieces that are coming together are complicated. And there is one path where we could do the three different things concurrently, which are get the ITP, then try and procure the land, acquire the land needed for mitigation, and then do the code and ordinance update. Those could go concurrently, which would take a lot of time. What we've chosen to do is to work on those concurrently. So they're working all at the same time. I think I said that wrong. It could go in sequence. But instead, we're doing it concurrently. I've said this so many times that I'm flipping myself around a little bit. We could do those three main things in sequence, which would take a long time, a longer time. Instead, our team is working to do those three things concurrently. So the big overview or the quick overview that we gave you on a Tuesday morning was leading to make sure that you, as the Commissioners, fully understood each one of those three big areas that we're working on concurrently to make sure that we get all this put together for the applicants and citizens of the county when we receive the ITP, hopefully, early first or second quarter of next year, 2022. So this briefing is long, at 90 minutes, to make sure that we explore every one of those tributaries. And you'll see in the information that was provided in your packet that we've also put together this draft sheet, which has essentially the three main areas and who's responsible for what and at what time those actions may occur. And so this is a draft. This is our first stab. Thank you to the county manager for kind of guiding us in trying to organize it in this way. But it's open to adjustments. So we'll go through the main areas, answer questions, and then talk about the roles and responsibilities as we move forward. Anything to add on that, Jennifer or Chris, or should we just leave it alone?
I think we can jump in unless there are initial questions. What we're going to present.
Commissioners, county managers, county manager, county managers. Any questions on those items?
Looks like we're good to go.
Okay. Chris, are you leading?
Yeah, so Chris, I'm going to ask Chris to share her screen, and she's going to give the bulk of this because it's, this is a follow-up to a conversation we had with the board at an agenda setting. And it's long because I think there was an expression from the board. We threw a lot of information at you, and you were like, oh, I need some time to digest this. And let's have a follow-up. And this is that follow-up. And when Chris and I put this together, this handout for you, I don't know where the screen went on my screen. It went away. It was really easy for us, right? Off the top of our head, almost, we did this. But we need to be able to communicate this to you. And one of the big pieces here is the board's role. So a lot of this work is being done by staff. A lot of it's being done by US Fish and Wildlife Service. But the board has a really specific role in a lot of these actions. And we wanted to make sure you had an opportunity to know about those places where you're going to be asked to do things or take action. And also about all the information that's going to be coming to you down the road on these different topics. So that's what we're doing. And I think Chris can, you can stop sharing your screen. And if everyone wants to use the handout, we can just start walking through each of these sections and have a little Q and A at the end about each one. So then I'm going to kick it to Chris, and she can take over because she's the one who's really smart.
All right. Christina Chapeau, Senior Planner with Community Planning. Thank you, Josh and Jennifer, for that. And it's great to hear that US Fish and Wildlife has confirmed their publication of the draft EIS. The EIS is a joint document. So the county will be publishing the EIS as well for the SEPA, or the state side of the work, on the 24th as well. So we are all synced up. With that, I'm going to start at the top with the ITP. And that first step is the publication of the draft EIS, which, like I said, is a joint document. So that was both county and US Fish and Wildlife staff working along with our consultant to develop that. There will be a public meeting that both the county and US Fish present to the community. We have scheduled those for October 12th and October 14th so that the public can understand what's in the draft EIS, understand what we're asking of the public as far as kind of comments we're, we would like them to provide to us in moving forward with that environmental review. At the same time, we're finaling the revisions of the HCP. There are some questions that were posed to us by US Fish and Wildlife and their solicitor that we started going through. And next week, we will start meeting with US Fish and Wildlife staff to go over that. The attorneys have already kind of started moving forward with their conversations so that the legal review is already underway. During that time, we'll be taking comments in and processing those comments to refine the environmental impact statement so that we can publish a final EIS. In the 2021 year is our goal by the end of the year. And at that point, it becomes in Fish and Wildlife's court once the final EIS is issued, where they do need to issue a record of decision. That is their agency decision on the environmental impact statement. And at that point in time, they would be then able to, some point after the Record of Decision or the ROD, you might hear them call that, is issued, they'll be able to issue the incidental take permit, which we hope, again, will be issued in early 2022.
So we'll jump in real quick, Chris?
Yep.
So the steps that she just relayed are right here at the top of your paper and going through that. And I make a note that in terms of coordination, when the EIS is set to publish tomorrow or Friday, we are already coordinated with our PIO, and we will have a draft press release approved and ready to go as well. So the purpose of trying to get this meeting to you as the Commissioners is because it's going to get out there in the community in a big way that we're creating success. And we wanted you to be prepared for those questions that may come to you.
Yes.
Yes, so that's a key point I wanted to emphasize. Thank you, Josh. Is that we're coming to you now because this is about to launch. Those phone calls and questions are going to come in. Chris is your go-to for answering those, helping your staff answer those, knowing when opportunities are coming, to attend a meeting, navigating the website, all of those things, finding the information. Please direct them to Chris Chapeau because she'll be the one able to serve those citizens best with that information.
And Megan and Brian in Theo's office have been great. They're aware of how to funnel the information as well. So good coordination happening on this big topic as it launches.
Yes, thank you. So many things going on, I forget.
You're great.
So I guess I can move on or if there are any questions about this particular portion of how we move forward with the ITP, if you can answer questions?
So this is, just to kind of back it up a little bit. Remember, this is the county government trying to get a permit from the federal government. That's what the incidental take permit is. So then we can then turn around later and issue the permits to our local residents. And the question would be, do you have, there's not a lot of this that we can control in terms of timing, since it's they're the regulator in this case, other than our communications, which we've done quite a bit. But I want to make sure there aren't any questions on this, on the steps that we just relayed. Because this is going to be a crucial part. Because you're going to get, residents are going to say, so what happens next? And this is what happens next.
Question?
Not right now.
I can just say that I also talked to Brad this morning, and he reconfirmed that so far, they're still lined up for first quarter 2022 for the incidental take permit if everything proceeds. So so far, so good. Commissioner Edwards, there you go.
You know, I might ask, Chris, didn't you go through this one time before in another position out of, maybe in Florida or something? It seems like I remember something. Did, was it similar? Are we kind of on track with what that, or has everything changed since your initial experience or your experience in that jurisdiction?
No, things, yes, I have had other opportunities to work and develop HCPs. No, this is pretty much on par for how these have worked in other areas of the country, other jurisdictions. I will say that I worked on an HCP that finished in 12 years. So we're ahead of the curve there. And an HCP that has yet to materialize in Florida, and it's been 20 years. So.
Okay, good enough. I just wanted your perspective because you're kind of the one with the most experience is the way I look at it.
Okay, great.
Right. So, okay, so we move on to the second section there, and that's all about mitigation. And that's so that we can get those permits out the door. We want to hit the ground running. And in order to do that, we came up with, so back up just a second. In the Habitat Conservation Plan, it identifies the amount of what we're calling takes. So the area, the amount of impact that we are proposing to ask for through our incidental take permit to US Fish and Wildlife. And that equates to something on the ground. And the Habitat Conservation Plan goes through how we created all of that and all the minutia. But in the end, there is a target amount of proposed potential mitigation at the end of 30 years. So we came up with acquisition goals and targets that took that down into smaller chunks, looking at our permitting and where worsening permits come in and how many permits we have come in and created a two-year goal for us that will reassess as we continue to move forward. With that comes funding. And the funding is in, as you, we've talked about before, in kind of two forms, through the mitigation fees and through the conservation futures. So looking at from the perspective of the role of the board, you'll be seeing the Budget Office bring forward budget requests that include funding acquisition for management and, or excuse me, for acquisition of lands, as well as a budget amendment that comes forward through CPED, through the Budget Office, that sets up the fund to accept our mitigation fees so that when we receive our ITP and we have the implementation ordinance in place and we hit that ground running, we really hit the ground running. We can start accepting those permanent applications, accepting those fees, and moving forward. We have currently outreach to sellers. That is through letters that have gone out through Josh here at the department, identifying areas where we have highest priorities. We also have real estate agents on board now. And they are helping identify and contact property owners and develop that pool of willing sellers. And then there is the real estate team here in Thurston County that's helping me and my team traverse the acquisition process and making sure that we're meeting all of the county and state rules and laws, as well as other portions of public works that are helping on the ground with some basic mowing or surveying that are needed for some of the real estate acquisitions. Yeah, the HCP already contains the mitigation fees. And we'll be moving forward and bringing you forward the rules that actually implement those fees through adoption. Those will come through the Planning Commission. This is where we have a little bit more flexibility in how we structure those fees, when people can pay those fees. So there's, there'll be some room to discuss how we go about putting the process together. And then all of the land that we have will need to be managed. And developing those management plans for the conservation land system, that's a big lift. And we'll be looking to hire a contractor that can manage developing those management plans and implementing those plans on the ground.
So I might jump in here real quick, Chris. So this section, again, remember, we're going concurrently. So we're presuming that the HCP that the federal government accepted, the fourth draft, that the technical items in there as it relates to how we implement this and what type of land we have in the service areas, that we think that that is what's going to be the outcome. Otherwise, they wouldn't have accepted it in the first place. Remember, we went round and round for years and years, back and forth on the drafts. And so we're taking, there is a risk that we're implementing pieces of the HCP by acquiring the lands that we have relayed, we're going to acquire in the Habitat Conservation Plan before it's yet reached final approval. So I just want to make sure that that was clear. So when the resident asks you, why are you getting all this land? It's part of the plan because we have to have the land that equates to where you're developing. So we came up with this plan based on where we think people are going to build stuff for the next 30 years. And they're going to build stuff in different areas. And the different building is going to be happening at different rates in those different areas. And we employed real estate agents and economic developers and all of these inputs that we put into the Habitat Conservation Plan. And the output is the service area land acquisition strategy that's written into the HCP. So when a resident asks you, how'd you come up with this? Or how'd your staff come up with this? We engaged with professionals about where they think the building is going to happen for the next 30 years. And that's the 30-year plan for the HCP. And to come down just one more step, the goal is to get a broad range, not put all of our eggs in one basket or one service area, but for the next two years, try and get a percentage, at least 10%, from each one of the different service areas. And that's a strategy that CPED has implemented internally to make sure that we don't run up against the top layer in one area and have way too much in another service area. And the service areas are broken down, I'll let Chris, if she wants to get into the minutia, based on the different subspecies of the Mazambo pacificofer and the other species that we're working to cover, the butterfly and the lark and the frog.
Now, but now it's the sparrow, isn't it, rather than?
It's the sparrow, not the lark.
Sparrow. So just wanted to make sure that that was clear. That the way we got here was based on information and data in an effort to make sure that the building could continue throughout Thurston County. Then the next piece, I think that's important, when we're talking about the mitigation strategy, the Board of County Commissioners has had this conversation on a number of occasions about conservation futures and how we, the county, helps in the strategy by purchasing land for this mitigation process. So it's not all on the shoulders of the applicants. And the board is committed to using conservation futures for that purpose, which reduced the cost of the fees to the applicant. And so when residents say, how much is this going to cost me and why does it cost so much? It could have actually costed more if not for what we baked into the plan to help with the purchase of the mitigation land, assisting in the costs to the end user. So I just wanted to touch on that point real quick.
Commissioner, I had a question.
Yeah.
Not necessarily a question, but you just discussed the real estate strategies made sense. You had the mitigation fees in association with the conservation futures. Can you take the time just to remind us all how that relates to the mitigation credits? And I think maybe taking the time to just walk through as to how an applicant, now after we have the incidental take permit and we have the land available to process those permits, how that reflects on the mitigation credits, their results in a fee? Can you take the time just to walk us through again?
Of course, Chris.
Sure. It's easier when I have a whiteboard. But try to describe this as best I can. And stop me if there's any questions because I know this inside and out. So the mitigation fee is a direct link to the amount of habitat or the amount of area that's being impacted. One of the other things that we're taking into consideration is that not all acres, when it comes to, through the lens of the species, are equal. So the habitat value for that particular species is taken into consideration. So there is this habitat quantification tool or calculation tool that has been developed and we have simplified and streamlined down into kind of a table. There's more information online about it. And like I said, when I have a whiteboard, it's easier to go through this. But the amount of impact that the applicant needs or creates is directly proportional to that fee. So the smaller their impact fee, or their, excuse me, their impact footprint or the development envelope, the smaller their mitigation fee. Once we know what kind of habitat and how big they're asking that area to be, a number falls out. And then that number is multiplied by the fee or the amount of the cost that it takes to replace that habitat in our conservation land system within that particular service area. So it is moving the mitig, or it's moving the habitat to a protected area by allowing somebody to impact an area and then enhancing another area outside of that impact.
Hey, we have a little time. This is, that was helpful.
Okay.
We do have a little time. If you'd like to maybe bring up the explainer video, should we watch that again?
Let me ask Chris something as she's moving along here. For years, anybody building a home, for example, when they get a permit, they're required on that envelope that you mentioned to put that black barrier material, you know, to stake it all the way around there. I don't know what you call it.
The construction fence?
I guess that's what it is. They're not supposed to be messing around on the other side of the fence, is the bottom line. So is that kind of a simplistic way to look at this and just say, okay, your envelope surrounded here is how many ever square feet? And then that's your mitigation?
That's a great.
That will be the impact.
Yeah, that's your impact for, and then you have the mitigation fee is figured out based on that somehow.
Yes.
Depending on the, not value, not dollar value, but environmental value to the benefit of the species that Josh mentioned. I think that's where we're going with this, right?
Yes, exactly right.
And at some point, are you going to say, well, because the cost that Josh brought up is the biggest question that I face from constituents all the time. Uh, because the cost that Josh brought up is the biggest question that I face from constituents all the time, you know? Well, what's it going to cost me to build a house? How much more? Uh, and then you could equate that to a developer who's doing a development, I guess, as well, but. My main concern is the individual that's building their own house, kind of like I'll use, uh. The gentleman down in Rochester that, uh, Jan Tavetin. Uh, I, I think that's a good example because he's been through it. So then, uh. Are we getting today, are we even going to get into what the potential cost might be because. That is a direct reflection on attainable housing cost as, as we move forward. So I mean, that's kind of been the goal to still make it attainable. And things like the conservation futures purchase and, you know, we were looking at buying in with, uh. The state, I think, down at that Tenino Ranch, some of that property is mitigation property. I'm just wondering at what point you're kind of dancing around what it's going to cost, and I'm just curious because that's what I, that's the question I get all the time.
Quick, you should use Mr. Tavetin and show it's going to cost you this much less because I'm sure. Where we're going to land is going to be a lot cheaper than where, what people have been going through over the last.
I hope, we hope so.
Twelve or fifteen years or whatever.
Time and effort because Mr. Tavetin, the, the, the mitigation requirements of their impact was to reserve land within. His, uh, his property, in this case.
You don't have to do that. You don't purchase it else.
Plus add up all of his hours of time with US Fish and Wildlife and county commissioners and. At a market rate and I'm sure.
Right, that's really, that's a good point because that's really the benefit of getting to this point because. Yeah, here they, they, any property owner who likes to build a home has some options. If, if, uh, the impacts result in a fee, they have some options to reduce the footprint. Maybe to avoid, uh, by redesigning the impact. So there's a lot of flexibility. At the end, they will not be exposed to a three-year process.
When I was developing the, when you were developing this, the thing and I was speaking with the master builders representative. And I, you know, I gave the raise that you had given us. And they were, you know, kind of like, okay, you know, nobody likes paying a fee, but once they kind of thought it through, like, we're good with that. Like, they were excited about the idea that they could come to the counter. Write a check and get the project done. It's time is money and, and it was, it was definitely a net positive from their perspective. Anyway, sorry.
But I'm almost thinking that Chris isn't almost ready to give us the dollar.
Then it's all depends.
Yeah, all depends, that's the answer.
Let me, let me jump in here real quick. The answer is right here. So. This second box up is the mitigation fee. So there's no dancing around. It's right there on the paper. Uh, and we have a calculator already published on our website. So you can go to the Thurston County website and plug in your area. And it'll put out, uh, information for you on the cost. And the backside of this paper is the implementation. So that's the third tributary. And the way that this works is when mom, pa, or whoever developer applicant comes into the Building Development Center. We have three strategies to help them with the cost. The first strategy is we'll sit there at the counter and they say, I want to put my house right here. And we see that it's right in the middle of like a beautiful area, like right behind Chris's head. And we say, you know, if you moved your house over here where you could avoid that beautiful area, it'll cost you nothing. So that's step one, is we're going to help the citizens avoid and have zero cost by avoidance to this HCP. Got it? Number two, they don't want to move their house. They want to keep it right in the middle of that prairie. We say, if you make the footprint a little smaller, you're going to save money too. So that's. So first avoidance, then reduction. What do you call that? There's a word for that, Chris.
Minimization.
Minimization of your footprint. They say, you know what? I don't want to minimize my footprint. I want to develop on that huge prairie. And I want to take down a lot of it and put up a garage and all sorts of other stuff. And then that's their cost. And so when somebody says this thing cost me a ton, did they avoid? Did they minimize? Those are the actions that they can take and we will assist in helping with the cost. And the calculator is currently on the website so folks can decide how much they might want to use in terms of a footprint. So that, that question has come up a lot and that's exactly why this briefing is important to make sure that you as commissioners know when you get that question, how much is this going to cost me? You can say, well, our team at the county has been great about transparency. They've got a calculator on the internet that you can use to find out. Is that helpful?
It's important, well, I was just going to say, it's important though, the reason it's not, it's not a flat fee. I mean, that's, it's, it's. It's a, it's got a couple of parameters.
You got it.
The quality of, you know, the, the nature, the impact, basically the quality of the habitat you're impacting. The level of the impact on that habitat and then exact, and then I guess we deal with the third part, which is. The quality of the, of the mitigation and offsite or whatever. So.
Yeah.
That you can't just tell people, oh, it's five thousand for a single family home.
Exactly.
Might be less, it might be more. Or like two to ten or something. I mean, it was like, there was kind of a dollar range Jennifer presented to us at one of those planning sessions way back.
And that's part of the HCP. So I mean, that chart of ranges of potential costs. Uh, for mitigation, um, is out there. It's easily accessible. But the, the starting point, again, like we've all been saying, starting point is not. How much would this cost me if the gophers weren't listed, right? The starting point is, oh, the gophers are listed. How much is it going to cost? And those couple pathways exist, well, three pathways exist. It's going to cost nothing because you can't do the project at all because the feds won't let you. Secondly, it's going to cost, uh, many years and many thousands of dollars to go direct to US Fish and Wildlife Service. To develop your own HCP. That's where Mr. Tavetin has provided us a lot of great information. And was interviewed as part of the economic study that we had done and presented to you previously that's also on the web. That shows that, um, that pathway will be in most cases more expensive and take longer and time is money. Than the third path, which is get covered under the county's incidental take permit. Um, and pay us a fee straightforwardly and then go do your project. So those are the, the, that's the space in which this is working. Um, and yeah, there's, there is no free lunch and there are costs. Um, and the debits, uh, the take, the amount of impact that you do on your development project. You have some control over and like we've said, you can adjust that as necessary. And then the credits that the county has to provide to get to Romero's question about the. How you calculate on the credit side, um, same thing. We, we have to show our work to the federal government. That we are constantly ahead of the game and we are providing enough conserved land of equivalent or better. Habitat value, um, over time to keep pace with or be slightly ahead of. The impacts that we're seeing come in the door by folks doing projects and us issuing permits for those projects when they pay their mitigation fee. Um, and all of that has to do with that calculation of the value of the habitat, um, and it's very site specific.
So if the development is, is not proceeding as fast as we had projected, we can, we don't need necessarily as much.
That's right. And we're not running out under that first table of, um, or I'm sorry, not the first table, on the second table that we're in talking about land acquisition. We're not running out and trying to buy all the acres we're going to need in thirty years, right? We're, we set the two-year goals. We're trying to achieve. Um, at least ten percent out of each service area in this first initial, um, effort. Um, and we're constantly adapting and monitoring that so that we're maintaining that. The credit ledger is always a little bit more than the debit side of the equation.
And just to finish my point, then I go to Commissioner Mejia, and then the public subsidizes that. At the tune of fifteen million dollars over thirty years through our conservation futures commitment. Correct?
It's, it's your commitment is five hundred thousand dollars a year.
So that's fifteen million dollars in thirty years. I'm, I'm good at that level of math.
I'm not, so I had to make it simple.
I'm not either. Um, so in terms of acquisition. Um, I mean, is there? I guess not a fear, but like, you know, I know that we're doing it by, we're not going ahead and buying the thirty-year. Uh, you know, pieces that we need. But is there a fear that maybe there might be a growth boom and those two years run out sooner? Like what's, what's? What's next?
Right. So we're adaptively managing how we're purchasing property and where we're purchasing property. The moment we need property throughout the county, but, um, we've got good communication within the department. Um, where reports can be pulled about where permits are coming in and how, you know. How many are we doing in each month? We, we also have good communication about what, um, compliment. Excuse me, comprehensive plan amendments might coming in that might rezone an area that does, you know, create that, um, sudden spike. And, um, now we're going to have a new subdivision here and we'll need, you know, credits to make sure that we have enough credits in, in that area. So all of that is, um, reviewed and communication back and forth. Um, pretty frequently.
That's a, but that's a really good question. So the first part of that, the adaptive management. So we, so CPED's got two main parts, right? You've got the long-range planners, which is Jennifer's group and Chris. And then you've got the current planners, which is Brett's group. And so we'll see a permit come in. So if we see a permit come in or like get a call from a big developer. That a bunch of acreage is going to be coming down the pipe for the next year or so. We may need to come to the commissioners and say, we need to work on acquiring some land really fast because we know that this development is coming. So that might happen. That's a very good question. Uh, the second piece, oops, so it looks like I see a hand from Romero. Is there a hand for Romero?
When they cherish ready.
Go ahead, Romero. Josh was.
No, and I think that's, that's a good point of what I want to compliment. Um, but I think it's intuitively. I think we're going to be seeing an uptick in development after the HCP is completed. Uh, the, the mitigation credits because right now there is a lot of areas in the county. Under the, the, the cap that, you know, prime habitat, they cannot go ahead and develop because there is not an avenue. To mitigate, uh, the impacts. So when we have this avenue to mitigate the impacts through the credits and how you described. It's going to open up those areas for the development community to start utilizing and start working on those developments. So. Related to Commissioner Mejia, I think when this is the, when we're ready to open the doors. I think intuitively, at least from my point, maybe there is going to be an uptick in development. Because some areas of the county are going to be open for business in a way.
Yeah, no, I, I think that, and we've worked to, what we'd call it is the pent-up demand. But the uptick in development, we work to capture that in a way. We don't know obviously what it's going to be, but. We use the back data on the real estate development. Before, based on what we inform for the future, but you're totally right on. And the second, I want to do the second part of that question in terms of the zoning. You will be receiving, um, updates when zones change and that means that the development area or zones are requested to change. That impacts the amount of acres that we have written into our HCP. And so that, if you ever get, which you may very soon, get a comprehensive plan item amendment request. That asks to rezone an area that could increase the density of that area or use. Uh, to have land taken out and used for building. That, that will be part of your conversation and whether or not you accept an amendment request from wherever it might come. Kind of, Jennifer or Chris, you want to help me out on that one? Because that was weird the way I said.
No, it's, it's true. It's part of the consideration. So all of this HCP thirty-year permit looking out thirty years. Sorry, we're trying to look at, uh, development patterns as we know them today, right? And anticipated development patterns in the future from the population growth we're going to see coming over that thirty-year period. Those were the factors that went into it. Um, as, um, new proposals come in to change land use in the next thirty years. So rezone a major parcel to be something we assumed would remain at a low density. And that maybe we didn't anticipate moving into a higher density. Um, part of the consideration of that kind of an approval. So again, this is another B O C C role will be how will this impact our, the pace. At which we're, uh, headed to implement our incidental take permit. So the more land we convert from something we thought would be low-density agriculture or low-density residential. To be higher density or industrial. Those conversions will mean, uh, more of that, um, those credits will be used up faster. And that has an impact on the rest of our development community, right? So it's something to consider. It's part of the equation. Um, again, we do adaptive management. So we can make adjustments throughout time as these things happen. Um, but it will be part of what you're looking at when you're considering major land use changes in the rural area. Where there might be habitat for some of these species.
Commissioner Mejia.
I have, I'm still kind of stuck on the acquisition part. If you don't mind, I have two more questions. Um, so I, I like this adaptiveness that you've taken with this. Um, my next question's in regards to kind of, I feel like there's only so much. Um, land that we can buy before other jurisdictions also who are trying to complete the HCP. Start buying it and, and it starts kind of being like a, a resource that everyone needs for their own jurisdictions. And so is there a plan for that piece of things?
So, yes, um, we've already had, um, well, back that up a little bit. Um, the county works with the Sentinel Landscape Partnership, which is a partnership with the, the state and. Who has, you know, requirements under the federal law as well. Um, and jur, other jurisdictions, um, are part of that, that partnership. And we're looking holistically at, um, the landscape here in Thurston County and where, um, can we partner with? Um, the state on, on acquisitions and, um, where can we partner with other jurisdictions? Um, so that conversation has started and will be ongoing.
Yeah. So let me jump in there too, Commissioner Mejia. I mean, you're right on, this could be competition if we're not careful. But what we've really worked hard at is collaboration. So it's not just the jurisdictions, the cities here. JBLM needs, um, mitigation land for the activities that occur on JBLM. So they're looking for other areas as well. Like Chris mentioned, WFW, other organizations that might need land. And so we've developed multiple partnerships at multiple levels, both individual with peers in other jurisdictions, but also formally. And the formal partnership is called the Sentinel Lands, Landscape Partnership. And it is a partnership that starts, uh, through the Department of Defense. So like Commissioner Edwards mentioned earlier. Uh, these HCPs happen elsewhere and Chris has been a part of them. The Department of Defense has gone through this before in other areas. And what they've found is that they like to create a partnership with the local jurisdictions so that it doesn't become. A place of competition in the land acquisition strategies. So we were invited to the table with DOD and other partners, including Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife. And Chris can go through the list if you guys would like, but to make sure that we work together. That we're looking at the land area that's needed and the service areas that are needed so that it doesn't become a free-for-all. So that, it, it's a very good question and we're working to prevent that for sure.
I ask about the Bush Prairie, um, HCP, is Tomwater and the ports, are they allowed to? I don't know how their HCP is structured and maybe you don't either, but are they going to be allowed to go out in Thurston, rural Thurston County to mitigate for their impacts within? Tomwater?
I can't answer that question because I, I don't know. I'm not part of their, um, process.
And they're, they're quite a bit further behind us in their process. And so they're, I think they're working some of those things out at this time. So it'd be a little premature to speculate.
But, but in, but in theory, I guess what I'm asking is theoretically, is that permissible? Like, could we have proposed? That we can acquire land in North Lewis County to mitigate for, for impacts in Thurston? Or are you limited to your jurisdiction to mitigate for your impact? Or can you go outside your, I mean, I, I get it with JBLM and WDFW, that's kind of different. But I'm thinking with Tomwater, that, that, or, or Thurston, or let's say Lewis had an HCP and Thurston had an HCP. Let's say Lewis had an HCP and Thurston had an HCP. Could we cross mitigate or are the jurisdictional boundaries set in stone?
They're approved, so the service areas are defined in the HCP. And that's what will get approved um, through US Fish and Wildlife Service. So you have to mitigate basically for the gopher within your same service area. Uh, and I don't know what the service areas and how they're being defined for Tombwater are. Chris, did you?
Yeah, so the service areas, um, US Fish and Wildlife define them for the species. And they are, in, in the HCP, that, what they are in the HCP, I should say, will be what they are for the city of Tombwater. Um, so they do overlap. And um, but what I don't know is an HCP has what we call a permit area and a plan area. And the permit area is the jurisdictional area that you can issue permits in. And the plan area is that larger area that you're looking at from a landscape perspective to mitigate for that species. I don't know if their plan area includes areas within unincorporated Thurston County at this time.
And we're not trying to not give an answer. It's not an answer we can give. We're actually not the perimeters in this. This is the federal government. So the federal government will have to decide the question on other jurisdictions, whether or not, where they can mitigate. So the question could be, yes, they could cross, cross jurisdictional boundaries. Or no, they've got to stay within their plan area. And we don't have an answer to that because we're not the perimeters. But that would be a good question for US Fish and Wildlife Service.
Can I ask one more question in regards to acquisition? Um, so my, my last question is in regards to, I, I mean, I, I know you guys have started a process, but do land trusts, I mean, can those, do those count as, as credits? Uh, can agricultural lands that are used, let's say, I, I'm not sure if this would even, you know, for cattle that are grazed constantly, can those count?
Right.
Even if they're in use?
Yeah, the, the simple answer is yes. Um, there's, there's a whole bunch of paperwork that has to go with it to show that, you know, they're doing things on behalf of the, the counties, Thurston County's HCP. But yes, I mean, we created a conservation land system that includes agricultural easements, um, because we know that the Mizzamah pocket gopher um, thrives sometimes in these grazed land situations. Um, and to not bring them into the fold would, you know, would be short sighted on our part. Um, so the land trusts were, will be working with the land trusts um, as partners to manage um, our properties and other properties. As well as um, engage the um, agricultural community um, in enrolling portions, um, or large portions of, of their grazed properties.
And so that, that actually kind of goes back to a question that Commissioner Minzer had, or a statement on the calculator. The calculator that's available uh, on the internet is very sophisticated. Uh, it's got all of the different um, calculations on the different soil types and area. Uh, and you can plug that in. And so Commissioner Mejia, to your question, there's multiple, there's high quality soil, low quality soil. You can get, so say you have one acre. Depending upon where that acre is and what kind of soil it has, what kind of use you're doing, you could potentially get more than one credit from that one acre. And, or you could potentially get less than one credit if, if you're going to use it in a different way. And so that calculator, back to the costs, when Commissioner Edwards asks, how much is it going to cost? It's really dependent on multiple variables external, such as the soil, the location, and then also the use, and then internal to the applicant, what they want to do with it, how big they want to make it. But um, the answer to your question is yes. And part of that Sentinel Landscape Partnership, one of the members in that is the United States Department of Agriculture Natural Resource Conservation Service, which is highly dedicated to ensuring that land that goes into this type of action in HCPs, that there is some overlap for agriculture so that we can keep farming in areas that may have species that are covered by the Endangered Species Act.
There's a good location to refer to. And that is the Collin Ranch down at uh, Tenino is probably your best example of utilizing all of above to create better habitat. And USDA bought them out as part of that uh, process of, I didn't really buy them out, but I guess development rights is the best way to put it, you know? And then they're allowed to run X number of cattle per acre. I, I don't know what that is, but let's just say it's uh, five or six or whatever it is. Uh, maybe the property would support ten or something. But if it did that, then you would ruin the habitat that we're looking to prevent, uh, protect. So they might be relegated to three cattle, or three cows per acre. And uh, not use any motorized equipment to pull invasive species like Scotch broom. You know, is that about right, Chris? I mean, that's kind of what it works, right?
Yes.
So I think we've got a great example to refer to, if you want to see how it can actually work. And that was put together before the, the whole gopher situation.
So I understand, I understand how the cu, the county could acquire a, a right of that type in an agricultural land. And that would, you know, potentially count in some way. What I've been less clear about is the land trust situation. If a land trust acquired property, they paid for it with, they, they got donations and they got money. And then they're going to manage it because that's what they want to do for land is. And, and if that meet our criteria, do we get credit for something that we didn't spend a dime on that capital land trust did or something? May, and then i- i- if that's true, then how does, how do we calculate the cost? Or is that part of the adaptive management as we go along? Is that question clear?
Yeah, I think I understand what you're asking. So there's a couple of ways to think about um, how we're getting credit. So there's the, the physical credit that we um, get through management of, of a piece of property that um, goes out in the form of a permit because it offsets um, an impact that we've approved. Then there's looking at the um, the landscape as, as a whole, from, from a landscape perspective. Um, having, making sure that we have surrounding lands, surrounding our conservation land system that are compatible with what we're doing on the ground. Um, provides that uh, that ability for us to continue the management and know that we'll be able to continue that management and not have to, I, I'm going to back up a minute. If we had a piece of property that was incompatible, say, an industrial site. And they, for some reason, um, had their back area backed up to our conservation site. And that's where they dumped their landscaping stuff before it got hauled off. Well, that, that's a seed source. And that seed source comes over onto our property. So now we're constantly uh, having to manage for that noxious weed over and over again. That increases our, our costs for management on that property. Um, where if it were land trust sites that managed and kept those noxious weeds down, our management uh, costs come down because we're not, for lack of a better word, fighting our next door neighbor, um, who's putting stuff that we don't want on our property. So we don't get credit in the sense where we can offset a permit. But it overall helps us to keep our costs down so that, and we can, the costs that we do or the funds that we do put into those properties can elevate those lands um, from a habitat perspective to its highest potential.
That was good, Chris. Let me, let me try real quick too. So we can't sell the credits from the land trust land. But it makes our credits that might be nearby more valuable. And it, um, and help me with this, Chris, because I'm going to say it, tell me if I'm wrong. And it also goes into the area that needs to be protected in that area, which brings down our liability, the need to get more land. So it's protecting area, which is good for the applicants as well. So, but to answer your first question, no. If a land trust buys property, we don't get to sell the, their property as credits to applicants that want build stuff.
Unless they want to roll in our prop, our system.
Well, that's not completely uh, true. Just because the acreage that we walked down between uh, 099 and 93rd, I think a hundred and four acres or something like that. Uh, if we commit, which we did on that property, we committed a lot of dollars. I think there's a possibility of repaying benefits from that. But I don't think you can get anything just because they went out and got money donated to them and they purchased it. I don't think we get any benefit off of that. There's a, what is it, Title VI won't allow you to, you have to have expenditure to get benefit, I think.
Yeah, and I think Commissioner Edwards is correct. That if the county partners with that land trust to purchase a property, which we craft that in the past as a property you're recalling, I think there is an opportunity to partner with them to secure some credits. Uh, Josh is correct that if the land trust purchased on their own, the county does not have an opportunity to access credits regardless of the, of the value of the habitat. I think the, the partnership on purchasing property with the land trust opens that opportunity.
Definitely, exactly. That's a good nuance. Thank you.
I understand the answer. I just don't understand the answer in terms of, you know, if, like, why is it that way? I mean, if the, we're, we're the ones that control development. The species or US Fish and Wildlife wants to see X number of acres protected. How, why does it matter who protects those acres? Like, why does it matter where that's come from? If we get lucky and have a bunch of land trusts that do the work for us, this, the, the pocket gophers are in the same position than if the county dollars went toward it. So I guess, I mean, I accept your answer. I just sort of theoretically don't understand why.
It just doesn't make sense.
Why you don't get.
You're right, you know, at thirty thousand level, you, you're right because you, you preserved the environment.
We just need to get to that goal. It shouldn't matter.
But I think the, the backing of all that is, is, is credits. Is when a, a, a proprietor wants to develop, whether we can use that land to access credits so we can say a pay and go system with the, the, the property owner. And then that's probably what I think we're going to start.
I understand that there's stringent requirements for management and all that stuff. And it wouldn't apply all the time and land trusts aren't necessarily looking for the type of land that we're looking for. I mean, I get that it might not happen very often, but if it did happen, it just seems silly to me that we wouldn't be able to use that as credit.
Well, Commissioner, uh, thank you for bringing that topic up. Please know that it was a topic that has been discussed with the perimeters, the federal government. And it was not part of the fourth draft of the HCP that they accepted.
Yeah, I got you.
Okay, you know, if you want to see some gophers, the only place I know where you can really see them easy, if you're going south on 099 alongside the airport. Look at the area where they mow that grass between the fence and the road. You will see all kinds of pop, pocket gopher mounts. A difference between pocket gopher and mobiles. And what's kind of funny and different there is that property is not necessarily maintained for po, pocket gopher. It's maintained for maintenance, but yet the pocket gopher is thriving like you can't believe there. So all the requirements that they put on don't always make sense to upgrade that, that property. I mean, if you let a property go and don't do anything to it, it turns into Scotch broom. Theoretically, that becomes detrimental, you know?
But that's a good point, Commissioner, because there are.
Sorry to interrupt, Jennifer.
Yeah.
I think that the Assistant County Manager had a question.
Oh, no, Jennifer should respond.
Okay.
Oh yeah, I was just going to say that you're right, that the maintenance of these properties is as or more important as the acquisition, right? So how we maintain them is written into our management plan for the property. That's how we get the most credits. Some, the more we can maintain them and provide that kind of a lift of conservation for this habitat, um, we're going to maximize the number of credits. So that's something we're always looking to do. And we're very lucky that we have a species that can tolerate that kind of maintenance and disturbance frankly of the soil.
Everything okay?
Is there like a rainstorm in here? And then Commissioner Edwards went through the window and it's not raining. So we're not sure exactly what's coming.
First of uh, noise.
The building's falling down.
It was like, shh, okay. Uh, God, I had a question about that.
You had a question?
Go ahead.
Robyn had her.
Right, so I'll jump in. Um, and take us back to a part of the conversation from a few minutes ago where there was a question about mitigation in other counties. Um, it, that's partly going to depend on the kind of money that we use. Because if we use conservation futures, land must be within Thurston County, according to state law. Just throwing that in.
And, and maybe going back to the uh, the responsibility, the county will have to maintain in perpetuity uh, those lands that we acquired, they will use credits. The mitigation fee includes some of that endowment. It will help us to carry on that, that requirement. So the, the mitigation fee is not only related to the acquisition of land, but also related to the long-term requirement to maintain those uh, the habitat in perpetuity.
Right, right. And conservation futures won't be available for the uh, maintenance of the land. Um, because you use the full amount of maintenance for parks.
Right, and that is what the conservation futures is really to help us jumpstart the acquisition.
Right, and then the fees, the fees that are collected at the counter will go into the maintenance. That's the mowing and all the stuff that provides the lift so that we keep the high number of credits for the land area.
That's right.
So I, I want to make sure we get to the questions, but there's also one more piece. And that's the implementation ordinance that's on the back. It's the, and you'll see, we've highlighted in red what the actions of the board are so that you guys, so, excuse me, so that the commissioners know what your role is. We're constructing the um, implementation ordinances currently. Again, our sideboards are within what we believe the HCP will be approved by the federal government is. And so Chris's team uh, in the HCP process has been coordinating with Brett's team. And they're working to um, make sure that the codes and ordinances line up with all the other permitting processes that we have engaged. And then it will come to you, we'll review it with you. But it'll also be set to the public, so there'll be all sorts of public hearings and it'll go through the planning commission. Uh, but this is going to need to go fast. And so when you're thinking of things that get reviewed and how the public process works, if we're going to have this tributary meet up with the first or second quarter of 2022, we're going to need to make sure that it moves through those steps. Public hearing, public review, board review, planning commission review, planning commission recommendation, public hearing in both of those items. Because if we don't have the ordinance approved by the board, but we've got the plan approved and we've got the land acquired, we don't have the authority to do it unless the board has approved those codes and ordinances. So having that in your mind as a really important step in the process to keep moving is going to be crucial if we're going to get to our deadline where all those tributaries meet same time.
Any questions on that item? Sounds straightforward.
Pretty straightforward.
Okay, we're good on that.
Chris, anything to add on that piece also?
Um, I guess what I'd add is that there are trainings that will be, that are being developed for internal staff on, um, because we're treading new ground with some uh, new technology um, that will help um, counterstaff go through the iterations with um, somebody about, you know, well, if I have development envelope here, what does that, what would that cost me versus here, et cetera? Um, and this is new. So um, it's, it's a, it's a new world that we'll be moving into. And we want to make sure that people know and understand, there's no black box here. We're trying to be as transparent as possible uh, with how you submit application, how the permit is reviewed, what information needs to go into it. And then making sure that our staff is trained on um, how to help the applicants um, put together their applications or um, making sure that uh, they can do the review in a timely fashion.
Chris, that is, thank you for that reminder. So not only are we working to make sure that our staff is trained internally on what these ordinances, how to implement them will be once approved by the board, we're also reaching out externally. we're also reaching out externally. Olympia Master Builders, Thurston Chamber of Commerce, the Business Advisory Group, Economic Development Council, the Realtor.
Conservation community as well.
Well, I haven't gotten there yet.
Oh, sorry?
Uh, so we've got the list of the business group, go for it, and then the conservation side, Jennifer?
No, I mean, that's, I just wanted to make sure that was, um, brought up too, you know, there, something to be aware of is that, um, you know, we talk a lot about this program and its, um, impacts and its benefit to folks who are developing property. Um, we have inter, we have interest groups with voices around this on the conservation side as well. They may have a lot to say during the, um, upcoming forty-five day comment period for the DEIS as well. They share concerns about, you know, are we doing enough to protect the species? Will this work to protect the species? So we'll be answering, um, to groups on all sides of this, and so the outreach is tailored to all sides of this as well.
Thank you. And so the, the endpoint of that was the internal work with staff has been robust. The external work with all the different communities that may have interest has been and will continue to be robust. And so it's not that we're, again, that's the black box situation. If there is anyone that you, uh, within your circles of, um, connection think that would like to have more information on this, please let us know. These next couple of months are going to be crucial as we build the implementation ordinance and how it gets acted upon. And so we're open to receive from anyone of the organizations that may be interested to learn.
I'm sure we're.
Uh, maybe this is for Merrill, so you were talking to the boss over at, uh, US Fish and Wildlife?
Yeah, Brad Thompson, yeah, he called.
So, uh, now that we've had this little bit of briefing, how does that conversation that you had with him kind of?
Fits, fits with the whole process, yeah. It's, uh, what he informed me is the, what he's on this step. It's the part where they drop EIS, and that's this Friday.
So you can fill in this first box, it's nine twenty-four.
Yeah, exactly.
And then Chris also reported, because that's the federal, uh, NIPA process. And Chris reported that also we're going to publish the CIPA, the state, at the same time. So the, the public review of both those documents, the NIPA document and the CIPA document state, are going to be concurrent. The NIPA, uh, review, I believe, has forty-five days review. And, and right here is what you have, the public hearings that you have listed here are part of that review.
On the public hearings, uh.
Correct me if I'm wrong on what I just stated.
So they're public meetings, uh, public hearings?
Yeah, that's what I was wondering, but there's a difference between meetings and, and public hearings. So that's, okay, you had me confused though.
Public meetings.
Okay.
Which they, is part of the public review process.
And so that's going to entail staff to do a little coordination in that. That's not going to be the commissioners, when you said publicly, you know, hearings. Right, well, that's, but we, we conduct hearings, that's what I'm.
Your, your, your hearings will be related mainly to the proposed legislation that it functions and you will be taking.
I would just, a little bit.
And, and that ordinance, implementation ordinance, Josh, is that, you mean, is it like, are you guys having to make this up? Is it really complex? Or is there like a template and it's just kind of pro forma enact the scheme? I mean, how comp- com- complex is it, is that piece?
I'll let Chris answer that question.
Well, to a point, it's as complicated as we want to make it. Um, at the moment, the draft ordinance, um, that is being internally reviewed, um, is not that complicated. It steps through some very basic stuff, um, why we have authority, um, how to submit an application, what are the pieces, what are the timeframes, um, that sort of thing, how do you mitigate? Um, and just kind of simplifies the HCP, uh, so that the rest of the world understands what they need to submit for a permit.
So I might, I might try that a different way. Um, I think Chris is being modest, it is complicated. There, there is no template, we are building it from the ground up. Our code is our code alone, Thurston County code. And so it's got to marry the different pieces that already exist. And then the other item that Chris, I think, alluded to is making sure that it's done in a way that's kind of plain speak. So that it, our internal folks can use it as a guiding document, but that it's not overly complicated so that applicants can also understand what they're trying to, um, apply for. And sometimes making things simple is really hard. And so to answer your question, no, there's no template. Yes, Chris and Brett's team are professionals, and they're building it from the ground up so that it is understandable by our citizens.
Because the legislative action needs to be codified.
Exactly.
And, and, and that is the complexity of it. The ordinance itself can be perhaps is straightforward, but the, the action behind it typically needs to be codified. That is the complexity of it.
Exactly.
Okay, what else?
So I guess what would be helpful is think in your minds, what are the questions that your constituents are going to ask you? And we want to be prepared to help answer those. The, the goal here is, we don't know everything that's going to be asked, but we're looking for your support. And so if the question comes to you, can you believe how much this costs, what are we going to do about it? The answer, I hope, is use the calculator and check in with our team. Because they worked really hard to implement the board's direction in reducing the cost and ensuring the protections for the Endangered Species Act at the same time. And so I guess my request would just be from the board, please keep us posted on, you know, ear to the ground. We want to be available to you as we do this launch and this comes out into the community.
And, and also if I may, this, uh, this is a, a, what I call a great cheat sheet. Uh, when, uh, information comes to you and requests for you for action related to establishing a fund in the upcoming annual. Uh, when we, staff is coming, saying now here's the fee structure. So is all this related to this page that you have seen? So, uh, and this, for me just to give you heads up, this will be easy, a key for you to keep because that will be related to the action of items the staff is going to be asking the board to take.
That, thank you, Ramiro, that is exactly right. So it's the second box down in the mitigation box. It really says really quickly, a budget request for establishing a mitigation fund. That's, it's going to be a big topic in the budget, but it's the how. And so when people walk in and ask for their permit and they pay the money, it's got to go somewhere into a fund that, once that money goes in there, then it can be used for the mowing of the lawns and potential acquisition of land. So that fund, that mitigation fund, still needs to be approved by the board. It's another piece of the tributary in the mitigation portion. Thank you for bringing that up, County Manager. And maybe, Robin, is there anything more in preview that we should say on that?
Okay, well, we did need an hour and an hour.
So get ten minutes off, that'd be nice.
Is there more we can provide you on this at this time?
I think we're good, guys, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Well, this, this, this job, uh, outlines, uh, how we can probably develop a periodic update just to keep the board informed as to how that progresses.
And I might, County Manager, I might send you the links to the HCP website that we have for the community plan. It's got the calculator and other items if you'd like to forward that.
Sounds great.
Okay.
I, I hope some of these questions that come in to us as commissioners, I'm sure probably could be addressed by you and your staff as you're coordinating some of your communications with these groups like, say, the Olympia Master Builders or, you know, those kind of folks. So I, I suppose there'll be an ongoing dialogue there with them as time goes on, right?
Yeah, most definitely, it, it's iterative, it's, it's not stopping. But if you get one, send it our way, Chris is excited and ready.
I bet.
Awesome. Okay, thank you, Roger.
Thank you, good job.
Thank you.